Just fill it out and put my name on it.
We've been here an hour already. Time flies when you're having class.
I have 7:02.
7:02, yes, that's what I have. It's 8:05 or 8:04. Okay, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order.
The United States of America stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody.
Senator Agello, Captain Stenson.
Here.
Senator Rynstein.
Here.
Senator Luddy.
Here.
Senator Canessa.
Here.
Senator Russell.
Here.
Senator Yonaga.
Here.
Senator Beach.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. So now we're on to our audience of citizens. And obviously, as everyone knows, we are here in person. Councilmember Mr. Peter, who's lucky enough to be out of town, I guess, having fun. And but we're here in person, and the rest of us are calling in. Obviously, still in social distancing. So if anyone is online.
I have unmuted everyone. I've unmuted everybody.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to ask you.
Okay, so yeah, if anyone wants to think that is your time under the right of citizens. Anyone out there? Anybody like forms of meeting appointments as well? Those citizens are available? Okay, once, twice, three times. Okay, we'll go ahead and close our right of citizens and move on to our meeting agenda. We'll start with our consent agenda. There are two items.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I have muted everyone, including Peter. You have to unmute yourself. All right, but I've muted everybody so that there's no background noise.
Great, thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's good. Consent agenda, two items. Except monetary donations, total $500 for the borough library. Purchase books. And that's the 2021. Approve, sell, whoever gets the purchase. That's 2021. So. Have those two items muted. Motion. Sure, I'll make a motion. Except the two consented items. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Maybe none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries, thank you. So now we are on to our public hearing that was continued from last time. And the purpose was to discuss and to continue to discuss exemption and property lease to charitable, religious or nonprofit organizations suing to Connecticut. Okay. Feel a personal property lease to charitable, religious or nonprofit organization. So we're going to pass an ordinance. I mean, that is, of course, the state regulation. And we were going to pass an ordinance that would make it a little clearer for the town to handle this particular exemption. It's something that someone would apply for, obviously, if they wanted to be exempt under this ordinance and under the state statute. And you know, just a little bit more facts than wanted. You know, I was asking that maybe I was some of the two. What did you determine?
Yeah, so what John is, we reached out to CCM, and they had all the towns that had adopted the ordinance and their language. And they were able to, you know, give us actually what's in their women. And these are towns from Manchester, West Haven, Stonington, Bridgeport, Danbury, New Brunswick, Stanford, Watford, senior package. So you can probably get a, probably not 81 section 58. And, um, and Dura, I forgot to mention that. And then Assistant Joe Ferraro also called around and, you know, he knew the Britain adopted the ordinance, but not with this field, moving them up. They have not. And so, and then we also asked a question if, you know, they saw. It's not scientific, obviously. They saw a lot of people taking property out. Tax. Some of them present. No. And I also spoke with, you know, the Corporation Council after which they gave some advice that's want to closer some of these towns. And what is the advice, same thing that you mentioned. It is not automatic. There's a process to go through. They need advice from the assessor. You go and actually make a visit. And if they're using only 20% of the space for the taxes in purpose, they're going to get the exemption only for the 20%. And also, you know, this is when somebody's leasing the property. If it's a church by land, they come up, they own the church, they are exempt anyway. Right? Same with the, considering the town of Berlin, I mean, it's highly unlikely that a private school or a church might move into somebody's house or a business and ask for an exemption. I doubt it. So I mean, my, I would, if Jeff comes to add anything, is to adopt this ordinance since we have checks and balances. It's not automatic, but it goes through a process. And then, you know, I mean, Joe's really put at these things on the technical part of determining what is done. And if you're comfortable adopting this ordinance. The council.
Jeff, if you want to add anything?
You have to unmute. Can you unmute, please? Hold on, might have to.
He unmuted.
Yep. So as Arusha indicated, there would be an application possible. Joe would develop, and we can work with him. There's a Connecticut Assessors Association has an exemption application that a lot of towns use, but I can work with Joe on developing an application. He'd be able to obtain a copy of the lease and make sure that the portion of the property for which the exemption is being claimed is used exclusively, which is the language in the statute, used exclusively for that purpose, whether it's charitable, nonprofit, or religious, so that the mission of the religious charitable or nonprofit organization is what is intended to be covered under the exemption in 12-815058. And it's not an automatic exemption. There's a vetting process that would include an application, and Joe would have the opportunity to obtain information that he needs in order to be satisfied that the language of the ordinance is applicable.
Okay. So it's still a continuing public hearing. I don't know if there's any members of the town council who's in comments. If any, the public certainly has a, if anyone is out there and wants to speak up on this issue, we're still on a public hearing. So is anyone out there, speak up?
This is Chris Old, Economic Development Director. Both wanted to mention the fact that this is an opportunity to get a group into town or to grow a town that might benefit our citizens. I think it's important that we have the application process the way it's not automatic. I think it's nice to have this opportunity to be able to provide this and give the council and the town oversight of it, but I think it's a positive thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, I'm going to unmute everybody so that we can see that Senator Penter is in the audience.
Oh, yeah, Mayor Members of the Council, Rick Penter here. I proposed this on behalf of the Moreland Hill School because when the school ceased operation, it had gone back on the tax rolls. We're still working with the YMCA to work out some kind of an arrangement with the Y. But since the ordinance was proposed, we ran into the COVID-19 issue, and it's kind of put everything back. There was some talk about trying to use this ordinance to, in case the Y was going to lease the property. We don't know if that's going to be necessary or not, but we certainly would like to have a toolbox in case that still came about. We're still working with the Y in terms of trying to take the property over, but there's been a setback because of the coronavirus and the loss of the Y's daycare enrollment, which is a large source of their cash flow right now. But we do, we would like to see this passed. I think it gives an option for the school, at least if it's leased to a nonprofit, at least we wouldn't be taxed on the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Anybody, anyone else in the public? Okay, hearing none, both go ahead. So town council, I appreciate all the input, everyone, Chris, Mr. Penter.
Our discussion.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, I have a word about the ordinance. But you know, why Newington and Mother's Field, or I think they've adopted? Or are we still in research? Are they, because they're bigger towns, they decided on it?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, this is how I would speculate. I can probably add, the ordinance needs to be adopted. I'm guessing there was no need, nobody asked for it. So they need to adapt. And it's just, it's like when they leave. Right? So unless you have any insight, Jeff, as to why is that?
Do it on a site-by-site basis, which puts an enormous amount in some larger municipalities on legislative body. Other municipalities do it the way that I think it's intended to be done in the statute, which is either adopt the ordinance. And but most often, it comes up, and it leads to this discussion and an ordinance being adopted. So, you know, in Berlin, it hasn't come up before, I guess. But like Arusha said, usually the trigger is a specific property or a specific potential lessee coming forth and asking for the opportunity to invoke the exemption.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. So, yeah, as I was saying, I obviously came up for the Moreland Hill School, and we know it's specific, but obviously, we do for what we do for all. So, you know, I think it was worthwhile to get some more information, some more comments on what other towns have done and how it might affect our tax rules and town in general. So that's why I waited. I think, you know, sure, if we're all comfortable, we can close the public hearing. But any other comments from the council? Okay. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. 8:16. All right. And we will go on to our agenda, new business.
New business is to adopt this ordinance based on the compensation that they've had. And after the properties are leased for charitable, religious or nonprofit organizations, they'll be exempt on property assets. That's for your consideration.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Arusha, for, you know, all the additional information you gathered. Excuse me, Assessor. So at this point, we've discussed it for a couple of council meetings. Go ahead and take a motion.
We move to adopt the ordinance, which allows exemption from taxation of real personal property, property is leased to a charitable, religious or nonprofit organization.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Second, the morning.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, all of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Peter. Any opposed? So move.
Number two is, we had a request from the Chair of the Berlin Housing Authority to extend the option, like Columbus property. And the recent was that is, I believe Joe's on the line, I'll have him speak, that he believes, based on the new QAP that has come out for 2020, there is a very good chance that he could get the 9% tax credit, which will allow him to manage at least about 60% of the total property. And so the deadline for applying to CHFA is in November. The current option runs out in July. And Joe has asked for an extension. When we spoke, he said he would prefer to have this extension until January of 2021. Because application goes in September. The results will be out by January, by the CHFA. And having said that, Joe, I believe you're on the line. Would you like to speak, please?
I am, just to clarify a couple of deadlines. November, November 2020 is the deadline for the application. They announced awards in March. So we'll know by March, maybe before then, if we're awarded or on track to get awarded. So anyways, getting back to where, to start this whole process. So as you know, we are under an option agreement that expires at the end of this month. I touched on these issues briefly last council meeting. So I'm here again to request an extension of the option agreement. I have my contractors ready to go. We've had informal conversations with the DOH. Provided that this extension is granted, we will formalize our discussions with DOH. Our contractors will be preparing the application. We'll file the application in November. And I guess that's the plan at this point in time. If you have any questions or additional information, I'm more than happy to answer.
So, so Joe, I know we sense a change, and there was some, I guess, language to that effect or possible language from the state. So if we do this, the application is going to be senior affordable housing, right?
Correct.
And we, obviously, the thing we want to attain is the 9% tax credit. We know that makes the financing much easier and we get that done. And that's, and that's based on a point system, right? So we think that the points, under a little bit different, maybe a little bit easing of the rules of senior affordable now from Lamont administration, we could be able to obtain that.
Well, the points, that actually deals with the state of Connecticut, not the federal government, so it's the more administration. Under Lamont, they've added some language. The point system remains the same. So under the point system, you would not qualify. However, they've added language to their QAP that allows the board discretion as to how strictly to follow the point system. So if there are plans that meet the needs of the community and have already been approved prior to the changes, then they'll go ahead and have discretion to approve those, even though you might not move the points. They're still not changing their focus on affordable housing. But what they're doing is allowing for the board to have some discretion as to which projects move forward and which don't. There are a bunch of senior housing projects that were in the pipeline prior to the change in policy. And those projects are in the pipeline and we cannot move forward. So in order to, this includes our project. In order to get those projects moving forward, they need to get approved somehow.
And you think from your consultants, and I know I'm checking into it, that we could be, hopefully, I know there's no guarantees of anything, we know that, but in that group?
A few informal conversations with DOH, we've had advice to move forward. So we will, you know, if we get approval tonight, we will go ahead and formalize our conversations with them. We'll hopefully next two to four weeks to sit down with them and formally go over the budget, the plans, and, you know, get the green light for them to go ahead and file the application.
This is on the Knights of Columbus property, we're sticking with that, right?
That's correct. So there's been some discussion about sites downtown and maybe doing a swap. So we've discussed some stuff with the developers. We've discussed some stuff with DOH relative to that. Any site downtown that's close to a train station would require it to be either affordable housing project or a workforce housing project that's affordable as well. The DOH probably would not fund a similar restricted project in that area only because of the amount of money they've invested in the trains. They're looking to have a stick to the plan they've come up with for that corridor. And that's workforce-type housing or, you know, a mix of market-rate affordable-type housing. So we probably wouldn't get funded for a senior housing project downtown. The project that Knights of Columbus affords us 15 units of affordable housing. And let me just reference the affordability. So we have six units of senior housing at 30% of the moving income, 20 units at 50% of the moving income, 16 units at 60% of the moving income, and eight units at 80% of the moving income. So all the seniors, I believe, would be able to qualify for those units. If we went with a private developer, you know, sold that to a private developer to have him develop it, it would be a market-rate concept. So all the units would be market-rate, maybe with one or two or three units being the portable section. So I think, we're not to exhaust the options we have on the table now with DOH and CHFA. And at that point, if those are exhausted and we can't move forward, then, you know, change plans. But at this point, I think the best option to add the largest amount of inventory to the senior housing stock is to move forward with the plan that we have on the table now.
Yeah, I know, that's always been our wish to get senior housing, more senior housing in Berlin, because we have a waitlist, right?
We have a waitlist.
And.
We're on the waitlist now, I'm sure, we'll build this, the waitlist will quickly expand because they're a little bit larger than we have in our current inventory.
So, all right. I mean, you know, we've been through a lot of roadblocks, unfortunately. Most of them not self-imposed by else, but by different programs and budgets and things from the state and easements and the whole host of problems over the last few years, which has been unfortunate for. Hopefully, it seems like maybe time has changed, so perhaps it's time to give it one more.
We have a window of opportunity, so we need to act on that window.
Yeah, yeah, understood. Council? Joe, it's Council Yonaga, just a quick question. The list that this project will be taking from to, you know, to put people in the units, is it solely people from Berlin, or does it include other units too?
No, under Fair Housing Law, we cannot restrict any occupancies to Berlin residents. So we will post, and those occupancies will become available. Any other housing project would be required to open up to any resident of the United States for that matter.
Yes. Anyone else, Council?
Joe, Joanne here.
Yes.
How large is our waitlist?
Okay, so the way the waitlist process works is each project, so we have two projects right now in our inventory. That's Margeur Moore, and that's Percival Heights. Each project has a waitlist. Those waitlists are open and closed at various different intervals based on the amount of people on that list. In order to move into, say, Margeur Moore, we have to meet certain requirements based on income and assets. The same applies to the Percival Heights project. Percival Heights project is a state-funded project, whereas the Margeur Moore project is an eight-point, right? So HUD, Housing and Urban Development Department. So we get a subsidy from HUD to manage Margeur Moore, and they have certain requirements as to how the waitlist is supposed to be operated. Normally, what happens is when we open it up, we open up for a period of 30 to 60 days. We get applicants to come in, we staff the waitlist, we hold a lottery, and we determine ranking on the waitlist. And then as units become available, we approach the waitlist in order of ranking and give those individuals an opportunity to take a vacant unit. If they decline, they'll move to the back of the list, and it goes on to the next person in line. I hope that answered your question.
You know, all this, Councilors? Question? Later. So you're looking for, will the applications through November?
Yes, I mean, I think at this point, if we go through November with the option, we're now in November if we move forward or not. If we move forward, then, you know, we can request another extension in November through the award period. We'll have a better idea of when that's going to be in November, make application. If by November, we've made application, then I'll be in front of you telling you that the deal's dead and you gotta move on.
Okay, so, yeah, so I, I mean, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this. Extend the option through November, that seems to be consensus. So let's go ahead and put a motion on.
Okay, Council Luddy here. I move to authorize the town manager to extend the option agreement in the town. Berlin Housing Authority currently set to expire on July 31, 2020, out to the date of November of 2020.
Can we make it November just for clarification purposes? Because I'm not sure when exactly in November they're going to open the application. So normally, it's around the 15th, but.
Not November? So amended to the end of November? November 1st, day, November 30?
That's fine. Sorry about interrupting.
No, that's okay, so amended motion and the second.
Second.
All right, thank you. So we've got a lot of discussion, talked about this a lot, and I hope we can give it one last try and get this done for, you know, seniors that need help, you know, whether they understand whether they're in Berlin or not. But we have been in Berlin if we can, so. And if you have any questions, if not, all of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move. All right.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks, Joe.
Is the number three? So this is requesting to waive the requirement on the quality assurance processes in the DNA. To give you a little background, Wendy's on the line with this. This is something that we have been giving to an outside organization who asked us about $30,000. Request came to the town manager's office to extend it for three years, and the rates are much higher. And I had a conversation with Wendy on that we should be actually bidding itself. So since, you know, the option was to renew it for three years or pay a higher amount for one. So I spoke with Wendy, and we can internally, about $1,000, specifically, I feel like they didn't follow, and it's fairly black and white. So I would rather do that, say $20,000, last. So I would rather do that, save $20,000 less, and then put it out to bid in the middle of the year with somebody else. So Wendy, if you're on the line, uh, I think you are, would you want to comment on it? And offer any clarity, guidance?
I'm gonna unmute everyone, because if Wendy, this may not be...
Yeah.
So, I'm unmuting everyone. Wendy, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Okay, um, basically, just as Arocha said, I have, uh, we have a contract, uh, we have a contract with this outside agency, uh, pretty much on both. The, um, contract is for three years, there's a two-year option following. Um, for the first year, it's, you know, it's set at $28,000, there's up to $500 increments every year, leaving us, um, for the last two years, 30, uh, $30,000. Um, you know, because our budget is tight, um, our, um, census is low related to the pandemic, um, we felt that this would be a good option, being that it was our year to renew the contract, to just kind of put it on hold, um, bring the, bring the process internally. Um, I have done quality assurance in the past. Uh, I can do the, it's required, uh, quarterly auditing and quarterly reporting with an annual report at the end of the fiscal year. And that's required by, um, by the state regulations. Um, I have done it in the past, I can, uh, bring it internally, and I can do it, especially, um, you know, during this time, and, you know, save the, uh, save the town some money on that, and, um, hopefully, you know, next year, uh, we have a better year, and we can look at then putting out the bid for, um, the services again. Uh, well, we, uh, Arocha and I agreed to relook at it in January, um, for the next fiscal year.
Okay, so Wendy, you're auditing yourself, understandable, or your organization, um, your department? Um, so, so that goes to the state?
Yes, it's a requirement, they, um, look at it in their surveys, and they get a quarterly and annual report. And many agencies do it internally, they usually have a, um, you know, one person is the quality assurance director. Um, but like I said, we're a small agency, uh, right now, we're running on the low side as related to the pandemic. So, um, I think it's something that can take on additionally, because I do have, you know, pretty extensive experience with it, it's just going to be more time consuming. But I'm more than willing to do that.
Okay, uh, Councilor, any other questions? Okay, so, no, I appreciate you coming forward with that, and I know, you know, your budget's tight, so we could save, uh, a few dollars on that, that's great, and you can sorry, take on some extra work, Wendy, but, uh, if you have, you know, a little extra time to do it, that's great. And, uh, you guys, so we've got to revisit it in January, right?
Right, right, yeah, we'll make it work.
Alright, so, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
We've got two motions here, so, yeah. Councilor Noggin, the first one, motion, I will move to approve the transfer of $11,365 to the nurse's, special services account, the department head account for $10,000, social security account $765, account $600 to perform all the assurance process.
Second on that. Thank you, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed? So moved?
This is second motion, I move to waive the bidding procedure for all the assurance processes, including quarterly auditing, quarterly reporting, and annual reporting to the law and work internally by the director of nursing, as this is in the interest of the town.
Thank you, second. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye. So moved? Thank you, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Item number four is a request, uh, for supplies books, various books, for different categories, and I have Helen on the line to explain this, provide some background. You don't need to... Get on, Helen.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this is a request we bring to you every year for the new council members. Uh, we are part of a consortium called the Connecticut Library Consortium, which on our behalf, um, approaches many vendors that, uh, most libraries in the state use, and they get us the best discount, uh, because they can bid it as a group. So, we, uh, like to use all these vendors anyway, and the fact that we have the best discount that's been provided, um, CLC is just icing on the cake. So we ask that, um, will you waive bidding procedure? Because the consortium already done it for us. And these, um, uh, vendors, uh, supply most of our books and audiovisual materials, a lot of our data services, uh, databases, and we just couldn't open the doors without, uh, some of these vendors at all. So, um, this is, uh, very important to us, and we bring it to you every year. And I think the, some of the prices have gone up because everything, everything is going up.
Let this come on through.
It is, uh, it is still, uh, a very good discount that we get.
Okay. Thank you, Ellen.
Sure.
Um, any other questions, any comments?
Yeah, Councilor Noggin, here I move to waive the town bidding procedures and approve issuing purchase orders for the all vendors due to the library's participation in the library program. Library connection, as the best discounts have already been provided, this is in the best interest of the town. The Taylor Company...
Thank you, Arocha. Berlin Council.
Books from Baker and Taylor Company for children's... Databases, book supplies, data services, library connection for $54,000. Data services, Novus for $13,000.
Thank you, second on that? I just like to go on. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Not, all is in favor? Aye. Any posed?
Yeah, he didn't want to go home.
Okay, uh, so moved?
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Ellen.
Uh, but, item number five, again, a gentle reminder to everyone, if you're on a phone or on your own device, please mute it, we hear a lot of background noise. Can you mute everyone? And then... Yeah, see?
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. Got to get into it. Much better this way. So, item number five is, uh, contractor miscellaneous concrete sidewalks, and I have Mike Ahern to give you some background information on this. Mike, uh, you don't mute him?
I have to unmute everybody, because I don't... Mike?
Alright, am I, uh, am I being heard?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Um, yeah, this, uh, Mike Ahern, Public Works Director. We do this, um, unit price contract every few years, the previous one ran out. And this is to repair and also construct sidewalks in town. We have, uh, miles and miles of sidewalks to maintain. So we found the easiest way is to have a unit price approach. We put this out to bid, we received six bids. Um, as noted in your packets, the lowest bidder missed, um, two proposal items. He didn't put two unit costs in, so he was dismissed. The second bidder put the wrong number in, and when I ran the numbers, it was like a $39,000, um, jump in his price. So, we're recommending that William Layden, who was the third apparent bidder, um, be selected as the lowest responsive bidder at, uh, 94, 930. Um, this bid will run, this contract will run to the end of next year, so that's December 2021. And this contract can be used by any other department in town, including the Board of Ed. And I think it's helpful for them because they have sidewalk issues pop up, and it's nice to be able to have a contractor go out and do a stretch based on unit cost versus bidding, bidding every little bit out. So that's our request.
Hey, thank you, Mike. Uh, any questions? We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Councilor Noggin, here I move to work contract number 2020-21, miscellaneous concrete sidewalks to William Layden Construction of North Bay, Connecticut. We'll offer concrete sidewalk construction throughout the town, various town departments. We're vet, established units, unit prices, and it will come from established line item accounts within fiscal year 2021, 122 departmental budgets. Contract will involve work we've performed from December 31st, 2021.
Thank you, second. Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, any other comments or questions, Council? Hearing none, uh, all is in favor? Aye. Posed? So moved? Thank you, thanks.
Item number six, uh, is a bid limit for GIS and maintenance contracts. Mike?
Yep, yes, I am. Um, this, we come every year with this, uh, this request. New England Geo Systems has maintained the town's geographic information system, which we all call a GIS, on the town website for many years. They've actually set up the search engines, the hosting, and also they've done projects for all of our departments, um, pretty much. So, this is, they've kept their prices the same. The $30,000 request, the, um, hosting part of that is 6,000. And in your packets, it shows what, um, the various departments, engineering, economic development, planning and zoning, the assessor's office, and the water and sanitary, um, you know, building water control also uses, uh, New England Geo for specific projects. So, we're basically requesting this to be renewed, um, for the same price as last year. And they typically do not go over 30, and sometimes they'll leave a little money on the table too for us, which is, which is nice. So, that's the request.
Thank you. Alright, any questions for Mike? Since you're hearing none, I'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay. We move to waive the bidding procedure for a contract for GIS annual maintenance and departmental services to Brooklyn Geo Systems in Little Town, Connecticut. Mount Pat to exceed $30,000, this is an investment interest.
Second, second. Thank you very much, any other comments or questions from the Council? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed? So moved?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven is the request to authorize the finance director to file for COVID-19 claims. I don't know. Kevin Delaney, if you can say, if you can say, if you can line?
Uh, good evening, it's Kevin Delaney. Um, uh, Berlin, like every other community and everyone else, has been dealing with the coronavirus. And in response to that, the federal government made a number of programs available. One of those programs that the town is able to participate in is the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Um, the stipulation through the state for to participate in this is to have the legislative body of the town authorize the CFO of the town to submit for reimbursement, and that's what this request is for, is just to give me the authority to file.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Kevin? Something explanatory, right, to get some reimbursements? Expenses that we can incur? So we'll go ahead and take a motion on this?
Sure. Councilor Noggin, here I move to authorize the finance director to file claims for reimbursement for general government, board of education, COVID-19 related expenses, permission under federal state programs, federal emergency emergency state of Connecticut office of COVID-19. Coronavirus relief.
Thank you, second on that, sorry, we're going on. Thank you very much, any other, uh, comments or questions from Kevin? Council? So successful, uh, all is in favor of the motion? Aye. Any posed? Carried?
Thank you. Item number eight is, uh, your end, uh, budget transfers to the who accounts? Kevin?
Uh, good evening, this is typical of what we have at the end of the budget process. We're required by charter to have every account on the general government side of the budget at zero or positive, so to the extent any of our individual account lines exceed the budget during the year, we make transfers within the budget to bring them up to at least zero. Um, they're outlined on the spreadsheet here, they're, they're pretty, uh, straightforward items. Uh, total's 44,808. I expect to have, um, another small batch at the next meeting as we are closing out the year with payroll and final expenses over the next week and a half.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Yeah, that's a big thing to do at the end of the year, as we do every year, so... Then take on the canvas?
Sure. Move to transfer 44,808 dollars, it's much cheaper to cover higher budgeted expenditures and identify accounts.
Thank you, second on that. Thank you, any other, uh, comments or questions from the Council? Hearing none, motion on the floor, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Item number nine is an increase of purchase order services. Doug Selat? On the line?
Good evening.
Hi, Doug.
How are you? Yeah, we just had a, we had a few extra repairs done this year, um, based on some weather-related incidents that, um, got our PO up exceeded over our threshold, so we're just asking for an increase to cover some outstanding invoices.
Alright, I'll take a motion. We move to waive the town's bidding procedures and authorize the town manager to increase purchase order 200439, Greenwood Group Services, Massachusetts, or Mount Pat to exceed $25,000 for fiscal year 1920, as this is a request for the town.
Thank you, second on that? Thank you. Any comments or questions? Council, hearing none, motion on the floor, all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Here, any posed? Motion carries. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is authorization for the town manager to sign amendments to the street contract for the Boulevard project. Press edge.
Thank you, Arocha. Um, yes, essentially what, with the Boulevard, we had received a grant back in 2015 for the Boulevard. Since then, we have taken various pieces of grants, and essentially, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, I, somebody disappeared, I thought I lost you guys. Um, essentially what this is doing is taking where we are now, which is about $800,000 in the state grants, creating a new agreement, essentially allowing the town manager to sign it on behalf of the town, so we can move forward on the construction of the Boulevard.
Take a motion on this?
Okay, move to authorize the town manager to apply for state financial assistance to Mount Pat to exceed $836,021. Boulevard to the train station project, execute such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic Development, provide such additional information, to execute such other documents that is mainly required. Assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for state financial assistance, such an agreement is offered, execute any amendments, decisions, revisions, thereto act as the authorized representative for patch resolution under due approval of Corporation House.
Thank you, second on that? Any, uh, comments or questions from the Council? One, vote on the motion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number eleven is section eight twenty-four road road, the planning and zoning commission related to the Boulevard. Chris, have this due?
Yes. Uh, thank you, town manager. Uh, yes, uh, there's a piece at the back end of eight eighty-nine Farmington Avenue that continues to the train. It is a piece that's currently owned by DOT. Um, we're looking to just get their approval to, uh, construct a portion of Boulevard. At this point, I'm not sure if it's going to be an easement or a license, but essentially due to state statute eight what dash twenty-four, sending it to planning zoning for their overview, um, and then hopefully if they approve it, it'll come back to you. Um, just essentially working on this. It's an important piece in connecting our Boulevard train station.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Um, anything to get this thing moving? So we'll take a motion on this?
Okay. We move to review the opinion of an easement or license from Connecticut Department of Transportation for Boulevard project. Be reviewed by the planning and zoning commission, section eight twenty-four of the Connecticut general statutes.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move.
Thank you. Item number twelve, another section eight twenty-four road road, planning and zoning commission, planning and zoning source for the Boulevard.
We won't, as, as you could tell, we, we are keeping both the council and planning and zoning very busy on easements with our new project. Um, this one essentially is an easement to ever source in order to provide power to the Steel Center Development with lovely development, similar to the last town council item, sending it to planning and zoning for their blessing. And back to you.
Daniel. Town is important for the project. Uh, we'll go ahead and take a motion on that?
We move to approve the grant for the lease contract to file with the Boulevard project into the Steel Center at Hartford Avenue for a review by Planning and Zoning Commission, section twenty-four, Connecticut general statutes.
Thank you. Second on that? Charlie, Deputy Mayor, so motion on the floor for electricity to our Boulevard and our project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Let there be power.
Thank you.
That's a solid make.
Item number thirteen is an authorization for the town manager to support the town's right of first of future perspective to nine twenty-one pounds an hour. As mortgage with respect to nine forty-five pounds an hour. Chris, this is yours too?
Yes, I, I, it's busy for, for myself. Yes, we've seen this before. I've worked in five to realty, own manufacturing building at nine twenty-one, um, Farmington Avenue, as well as the old Labineac Building. Essentially, we, uh, had a facade grant on the old Labineac Building and a right of first refusal to purchase the building at nine twenty-one Farmington Avenue during a refinance. Essentially, all we're doing is putting our liens, both the bridge lien on the facade program and the right of first refusal behind the bank. We've done this before relatively straightforward, but essentially provides the bank, um, a comfort level on redoing their mortgage.
Any motion on this?
Okay, and moves authorize the town manager to execute test coordination agreements between Amto Machine and its related entities. If they, uh, real LLC, fat to real LLC, we expect right of first refusal, nine twenty-one apartment Connecticut Avenue, according to volume six ninety-seven, page eleven thirty-six of Borough Lane Records. Town's mortgage, nine forty-five Farmington Avenue, according to volume seven twenty-one, page ten forty-three of Borough Lane Records. But it's the review and approval of corporation counsel.
Thank you, Brendan. Second on that? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item number fourteen, the tax abatement application for LLC. Back at you, Chris.
Absolutely. Yes, so MC Barbour LLC is, um, well, there's, they currently have a small barber school and barber salon in Weathersfield. Uh, they have purchased the building that was, I believe, a restaurant and, as of memory serves, a very interesting club have burned down, um, right near Sage Park. They purchased the building, they're going to be renovating the outside and the inside, moving their barber school there. And essentially, the portion that is going to be, uh, cutting hair is actually going to be training for the new barbers. Uh, the gentleman who actually apparently has some both national, international renown. Apparently, if you look up MC Barber on YouTube, he's won some competitions. So nice little opportunity, they're going to invest in town. Move the option here, bring some folks. So we're very, very pleased to go forward to the Council because it involved, and I saw, and as many of the council members know, quite a pain for them because what's been there has not exactly been in the best public interest at that property.
Let's see it upgraded.
Definitely an upgrade.
Yeah, and, and this is obviously consistent with our tax abatement policy, right?
Yes, it is. Yes, essentially, it does fit into the tax abatement policy. The nice thing too is, um, Planning and Zoning Commission actually added language in order for, um, schools of this under the Berlin Turnpike vocational schools. So it was a nice addition because it will bring both taxes, people, um, and essentially we'll, we'll take this building and create vitality to it. So it very well. And we're not looking at a lot of money, but the nice thing too for them, the three-year tax abatement is going to be a lot.
Yeah, sure, it's great to, uh, bring another, uh, small, small business to town and, uh, abate that building. So, yeah, great. Go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, move to approve a tax abatement for MC Barber LLC for renovation of fourteen twenty-seven Berlin Turnpike. Setting year one, twenty twenty. For the town's tax abatement policy.
Thank you. Uh, second, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you so very much, Councilmember. Have a great night.
You too, Chris. Thanks.
Item number fifteen is a bid favor for the cotton system. Madam Tomfries, would you like to take this one?
No. Very similar to what I had, uh, come to you back in May for. Um, it, it's just the idea now, I think I'll be on the agenda every year for the waiver of the bid with cotton. Um, it has to do with not only the land records. And there was an increase with that because of us going to file. But also we increased the number of dog licenses that each of us had on our desk and everything. Um, and it really went beautifully in June. We did a great job on licensing dogs, the whole bit. People were phenomenal. You know, a lot of times people wanted to come in, but we encouraged them to either do it by mail or do the drop off and, or the drop offs and people were, you know, they really were. Um, so we were able to process most of our licenses very easily and quickly. And then also because of the attorney who had been doing my auditing, um, she has a medical issue and just couldn't do it. So we went to cotton and asked them to do the auditing. It's us importing, they're just checking. They did give us a little bit of a break as far as costs, so that's where everything kind of ended up. But this would be for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Next, Dave. Okay, we'll have to take a motion on this?
Okay, move to wait the town's bidding procedures to allow the town Burke's office to continue using cotton systems, Inc. software for land records and dog licensing, liability maintenance, auditing services and supplies to the office for not that exceed fifteen hundred thousand five hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Brendan, uh, second on this? Thank you. Uh, motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Ooh, that did. Moving through that agenda very quickly.
Wow.
I know we want to stay longer. Let's go there.
You don't want to be jinxed, right?
Don't you? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Ian. So I have a few items I want to, uh, discuss with you and a couple of them are important. So I want to talk to you about the Boulevard. We're getting all of, you know, Doug signed up. Um, you know, we've got the lowest bid, but we still can't award it, um, because we don't have all the financing, things like that. So our plan was to have, um, Newport complete their financing by end of June. And fortunately, their bank has a backlog of applications that they're processing with COVID nineteen. Uh, pay, uh, paycheck. And, uh, in the couple of hundreds, right? So as of, when we spoke to them at the beginning of, that may have been the beginning of June, they were looking at the July time. The latest, what's coming from the bank is they're looking at August month to, uh, underwrite them. So I have some concerns waiting until August, which means we can't really award Boulevard contract until probably September, everything comes up. And remember the eight hundred and thirty-six, uh, thousand or so that we have from the state as a deadline, roughly deadline of December third, plus twenty twenty. So, okay. Few options that we have. One is, uh, to reach out to the state and ask them to extend the deadline from December to twenty twenty-one, right? Which, which we will do, but we, we won't also have a plan, not A, B, and C as well. So what I, what I did was I reached out to Newport and asked them so that you have to wait till August to get your financing from the bank, your balance sheet is very strong. How about you pay with total cash into the project, which is about four hundred and seventy thousand. You would be the one, uh, purchase of, yeah, sixty-nine, nine, thirteen. And then remember that there's shared cost in the Boulevard, about seven thousand, was nine thousand, seven thousand, um, supposed to pay. That is pay as you go, uh, the baby. Discuss it. So Newport verbally, they said, you know, that, that's not their preferred way to do it, but what they can do is to meet us. Meaning from the four hundred and seventy, they can pay two thirty-five today if you want the deposit, like, if they want cash. Obviously, you can, of course, to do that. And then the, the town sort of either appropriate the, um, you know, maybe the surplus or the fund balance until, yeah, bank closes the August. It will allow us to award the contract, hopefully by the end of this month. And the Boulevard, the timing of that is in hundred and twenty days, there's, everything goes well. But I, I just don't want to wait until September, October to get that hundred and twenty days. You know, project, you're always a plan. There's something that's going to come up. And the last thing you want is to lose the same money because there's some of the money still. So having said that, we talked about there was an item for the, the street kind of application. Look, half a million of that is funded with this project. There's another three thirty-six that is not in the overall one point two. That we are going to get, but not probably tomorrow, on August, September timeframe, you can have that three thirty-six. So we, we would not, you know, the worst case scenario is, you know, even if, I don't think this would happen, even if Newport does not get their financing, they would get the three thirty-six, so kind of, uh, out of cash, so to say. So what, what the proposed that we do is for the two thirty-five, that we carve out eight sixty-one, second thousand dollars. And then how many five thousand is for nine oh three? And just close on those two properties, not nine thirteen. Nine thirteen would be open. And then their two thirty-five, they'll allow those two properties. Their plan is not to wait until the, as soon as we pass the nine oh three, to build nine oh three, uh, waiting until this completely. So what, I want to introduce this to you to sort of get your, uh, reaction to it. After we discuss it here, we probably want to talk to, not probably, definitely want to look that through the board of management to start with, appropriate some funds, um, that we need to be part of it and buy into it. And, um, my, my recommendation is that we look at these all options, you know, suddenly, you know, go to the state, but that's not, only up to us, right? I, I don't know what the state is thinking. This is not just our project. They have, they put, uh, every town on notice saying all these extensions, they're wanting to take one. This was pretty bold. Now, the state is also, uh, you know, you know, probably stretching on, um, outside on cash and they, they might go either way. And, and, and in some circumstances, the executive orders, they have allowed some lands that sort of, um, beyond that, they more flexible. I'm not saying they won't, should just count on that. And, and my other one is in the, you know, with the towns appropriate two thirty-five. I'm not so worried about the fact load, let's pick up it, because even though Newport gives two thirty-five, the very first step, we can start billing the state if one, if the cash is there. Um, separately, I reached out to, and they sent me a letter, very nicely, saying, this is not to say that, you know, not that everything's approved or anything, but sort of saying Newport is one of their, there's customers and they've been with them for a long time. They're good standing and, uh, it's just the underwriting and all that has to, you know, take its own course. It's meant to be spoken ninety, so put everything, um, delayed everything, otherwise they would have got all this. Thoughts, reactions?
Do you think it critical to move forward as soon as possible? Uncredibility, partner about doing six years. You have a contract, um, and materials are starting to get very hard. We have a lot of trouble getting, especially road though. Soon we get it in the hopper. And I think the risk is very low. If, if the deal fell apart, we have a complete fraud with, we're in thirty-five thousand dollars in money.
And we won't be out two thirty-five either by the end of the year, we're going to get six thirty-six.
Right, because we're, we're holding a piece of property.
So there's not really a big risk back.
Right, so nine thirty, you won't be selling it. So you can sell them to someone else.
I think we have to do whatever we can to preserve this project.
I, just my conversation with Newport, I, I think I've, uh, before. They are ready to run. You're going to see as soon as the Boulevard gets completed, they are nine oh three. They're going to invest. They've already drawn up plans. They are looking for, you know, tenants. They are looking behind scenes, like, please.
I agree.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, right, all that. Yeah, it's good. Great. And so, uh, so we'll put, put on the agenda for that.
So what we'd like to do is to formally put this as an agenda. And Lexi and I can talk about how we, uh, look. And.
Yeah, so I, that will. Yeah, good, great.
Okay. So thank you. So that's on the, uh, Boulevard. Other things I fairly have, remember we, when we approved the, uh, adopted the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we took a lot of that, all capital out. And one of the things we had discussed was to bring, um, some capital request to you, uh, it's coming here twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty surplus, projected surplus. And, uh, the Board of Finance has indicated, trying to find the best, um, sort of hold off on it until we see what our level of system, at least in August. But I will do a request next meeting, and then Board of Finance can decide if it's. And then Board of Finance can decide if the revenue collection is bad, or approve anything. But that we don't need to know. I could get it like that. And they'd be comfortable by August fourteen, we can, or not. At least you're not waiting till September to do some of it. Again, a lot of these things are taking much longer now. No point, even if you want to buy today, just do it next year. So, just, if I.
I mean, by the, so by the next, our next meeting now, we won't really know. We won't know what taxes.
So, you could have, I'm assuming, you could have a, that could be a subject to.
Oh. And give the collection guard. Because they have a meeting in August.
They have a meeting August four.
Yeah. Wait and see. Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's unknown times here.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, if we're okay with it, let them.
Yeah.
We said it, we said it, too. You know, they don't.
Yeah.
I think either way, it's probably fine. Spending. Actually, which I'm guessing will be lower, but we don't know.
You don't know.
I don't think anybody knows.
So, fines coming in well, though, it's just.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's early.
Certainly.
Early. But money is coming in.
Money is coming in.
That's a good thing.
That's good. So, as you know, moving on to the money, Town Hall is by appointment, but they have open for the revenue collection. So that those are open during business hours, they can come in, they have full markings for social distancing and telling people to wear masks. And, you know, I've told my staff that that stuff make it difficult for people to buy, you know, their salaries, right? People are, that's.
A summer service.
Yeah, someone not really allowed it, but no. They haven't paid. It has worked out so far. I'm, I'm, actually, I speculated this, hey, probably remember? That most people, we're going to see a few people coming in in person this time.
People.
Yeah, it's out the door like crazy. You're like, people coming, everyone's, you know. But I think a lot of these, we don't let them go and stay online.
But it's early, though. It's always the two days towards the end that everybody.
But also.
Me included, I'm standing.
Dumping in the mail. You know, we send an envelope.
I like coming in.
I know. And then also, you can, people can use your own bank or good place, even costume. So, but, but it's blowing. A lot of people like to pay their taxes in cash.
Yeah.
Some like a receipt, so, which is fine, we will grant it.
But I'm trusting them, I want the receipt.
Yeah, I know, I'm trusting them.
Yeah, that's it, gotta have the receipt.
And I mentioned last time, the library is open.
So.
Yeah, the lobby's open now, and I'm going to forward you a video that Helen and I staffed with, it's, it's really. Just seeing.
That's when they posted up.
With the dinosaur, and you see that? Oh, it's really fun.
So, the lobby's open, where you can go in, like, pick, pick, uh.
So, I think it's still by appointment, obviously, so that they can accommodate all the, I mean, all that. But I had, people have forwarded me, the residents, I hope you know that the library staff is great and, you know, they have accommodated all the rest. And, you know, people can go online and call and order whatever they want and inspect and pick it up. So, again, just like the restaurant, that's just because they are open. I mean, people are actually great about coming inside. They would rather get stuff from outside and go if you can provide that service. So, I've had a lot of, okay, you experienced this too. People have been really supportive and understanding and.
Great.
Every once in a while, we have people, maybe on World War III, which, um, sometimes, you know.
It's always a few.
Yeah, it's always, it keeps it interesting. Finally, I, I just handed out, I manage, there's a template, one that I filled out and I, I had it right up. So, this to me, I think all of you are going to fill this out.
Yeah.
Either by paper or online. Go on, and then give it to you, that's how it works. I'll give today's.
Yeah. Last time.
I think in the past, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we have Denise filing.
Denise, she does like all of it.
Yeah. Yeah. So, we'll, we'll get into her before the next council meeting, right?
Yes.
Right? Is that governor's, right? Get it before, to Denise before, you know, give her a few days.
You want to set a deadline for people to get it back?
Yeah, so, yeah, so. Yeah, so, yeah. First, right?
Yeah.
We want to get into her week?
Yeah.
Fourteenth or fifteenth or something, we have. We think fifty, drop dead fifteen. Oh, we get it to, she's in, right? She's in, on vacation.
She wants to just go back.
Okay, all right, well, good. So, yeah, so fourteen, fifteen, very late is fifteen, so we can, we can compile it and then we'll have it. Then we can have an executive session. Right?
Yes.
For the next meeting. With your staff.
That's good. That's all I have.
Okay. I mean, pools are open, right?
It's open.
And how we doing?
That plus of all.
Right, just first pool, yeah.
And then, uh, you know, the cloud has been decreased.
I honestly don't know.
Yeah, I think it's gone from fifty, they reduced to fifteen, thirty-five.
Less than fifty.
Thirty to thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
How many people?
I don't know.
I guess. I guess maybe it's just more manageable.
I don't know. Find it out now.
So, we should find out, I think it's a state. And lines. Oh.
I don't necessarily.
No, it might not be done.
But I mean, I'd like to know, because I haven't seen or heard anything about it, so I was just wondering.
The first hour, oh, okay. People not right, is it out there on the town website?
They're on the Facebook page.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, 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 I mean, they're open, but if you could just see what.
Yeah, I'll find out, but, but.
And how's it, how's it go? Right? Okay.
Managing okay?
Yeah. Good to know.
I could tell you, just that again, then things are, things are not good all, you know.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Have you heard anything about the basketball courts in Grand City?
Yeah, so we, we're going to put something out to, it's, it's a odd thing, you know, like, people complaining that you know basketball court, now people are complaining there are too many people in there. I'm saying, not everyone.
Yeah.
Folks who are not from bowling in there. And it's filthy, the trash cans are full. So, we're putting something up tomorrow in the Facebook page and please, you know, the door, the, perhaps, we have plenty of people that are moving.
Really, real?
Yeah, they're so, yeah, they're doing, yeah. But it's just, people throwing empty water bottles all over. Just kids, right? So, there's a little bit of noise there from residents who walk and they don't like what they see. So, they're trying to just send us like a, you know, message.
Is it the high school courts?
All courts, yeah.
There's some high school.
High school is the one that is probably issue that people.
I mean, I would think, we, I don't, and I don't know how, I mean, I guess we would not. Parking wreck, parking wreck, but should we limit? I mean, we're limiting the pools, would it be kind of somehow?
So, who's going to, you know, monitor?
Well, somebody from the parking wrecks could maybe stop by there several times a day. I don't, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, maybe, maybe discuss it and see. I mean, if we're limiting other areas, maybe we need to. Because I, I mean, you know, my son used to play there a lot, and I, I could see it get out of control easily. Even in the old days when there was no problem, there was a ton of people.
You're right. You could have someone new around, but I.
In parking wreck?
At the end.
They, yeah, maybe twice a day, just share that, or just, I mean, what's it going to take?
Probably night or. I don't know.
Yeah.
Probably it's going to be the evening.
Should be, you know, I don't. Tuesday.
Are there lights there?
Uh, there were lights, yeah, there was lights. Yeah, so, I don't know. If you're on the road, should they, they can just monitor it? If it's out of control, maybe, I, I don't, I don't know, I would limit it, but. Well, yeah, I mean, well, what's school security doing during the summer, or are they going to shut they around if they offer?
They're there, they're there. But, you know, I'm not sure again, like, given the date.
No, may not be within there.
We can find out.
Well, it's on school property. I don't know. I mean.
Check it out.
Hey, Jeff?
Yeah.
So, just out of, just out of curiosity, so basketball courts, I mean, they're town courts, but they're on high school property. Like, school resource officers, they're at school, they're working now, could they monitor that, something within their purview? We have to look at the contract, or what do you think about that, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, I mean, it's within their purview, it's a school facility.
Think so. I mean.
I don't know what their contract says in terms of what the implications are with respect to athletic, outdoor athletic facilities, but.
Right. I mean, just so, I don't, I don't, I have no idea. Right.
I mean, if they're there.
If they're there, I mean, I'm, I'm perming the area.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if there's something, they see a presence there, maybe they keep.
I mean, I mean, they could even look from a distance if it's not that crowded, they'll, obviously, they see a ton of people. Right. Throw trash everywhere, say, hey, you know, maybe we, I don't know, again, I don't know how you limit the amount, but we're limiting everything else, so. Another problem for you, town man, Mr. Town Hall. Another small headache, just very small. Not bad, not bad. Appreciate it. Okay, so also, special community reports, there have been special committees, right? Nothing. No, there are, there's been COVID-19 issues everywhere. How's your committee doing?
I wanted to bring up something. So. Next time around, people are agreeable to it. I thought that maybe next year, we could examine LGBTQ population and fly a gay pride flag here at the town hall, at the very least. Maybe even have a ceremony for the initial raising of that flag. To acknowledge our, our LGBTQ population and kids in high school and, um, yeah, I thought it was something nice to do.
That's for. Of the.
Of the June.
Past, right?
Yeah, true, yes. But I thought it was nice. I mean, I'd like to even see like flags down, farming to now, just for the first, but I suspect, you know, I want to see what foster was. But at the very least, I'd love to see one here at town hall. And like I said, just a ceremony, you know, raising.
So. Next year.
He did for next year.
Well, I mean, you know.
June.
June is.
Pride on this order at this point, um, so, but I think it's important that. Et cetera. So, yeah, and the kids at high school know that we supported and acknowledged.
Thanks. All right. So. Any else? Evan, comments? Evan, doing well? Okay, acceptance of minutes. Oh, what, just one of those fireworks complaints, I had, I had a couple of emails, and I don't know, I think there was a bunch of fireworks on the campus. I don't have any problems with anybody, at least.
Oh, your brain was awesome. I think your brain is fireworks.
Yeah, I saw it, I saw it, it was pretty good, yeah.
I put one from a fire marshal, let somebody get back there. I think so, that makes sense.
Oh.
It's going to go.
Oh, that's great. That's the reason why.
So, other than that, I had a lot to learn about.
I had a couple of emails, some people, I said, well, the police department did the best they can, and I hope there's a problem, call.
Some people, you think they're back there?
They didn't, just one, one person just said, you know, heard a lot around the neighborhood, you know, very crazy. Illegal, because it's starting to be doing one. Yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, I said, yeah, they'll respond as the best they can, and, uh, you know. So, I don't know. Right enough, there was, I didn't, there was any overriding issues, stuff like that.
As long as it goes celebrating, that one get the fourth of July, I thought, so.
I think, yeah, I guess it's funny this year, though, right? Because it seems like in the news, it, right, for like the week ending, I know they even called, gave you an ask for comments, I never, I didn't get back on that day. But they were calling everywhere, air, more than, more than usual, illegal stuff, right? Whatever reason.
The news story I saw said it was more than usual because so many public.
Are not, right? Yeah. I think that's what happened this year.
Showed the state.
Yeah, they seized a bunch, right? I saw a couple. I guess it's not, no one's getting hurt here, so we're happy, so just wondering how. Okay, so acceptance of minutes, June sixteen.
Take a motion. We should accept the town council's minutes for June sixteenth. Followed one.
Thank you, second? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Someone? And motion to adjourn.
Come on, Peter, we have nothing to want.
Peter?
I think he keeps going.
Go. Why the motion?
For him.
All right. Second? Yes. All those in favor?
Wow.
Aye. Okay, not bad, all right, yeah, huh?
Okay, yeah.
Pretty good?
Thank you.
That clock's never moved, though.
It's been a long.
Time just rolled in this room for some reason. Why?
See you, Jeff. Bye-bye, goodnight.
Bye, Jeff.
Bye, thanks, Jeff. See you.